...for all of the city council meeting in order, first want to welcome all our citizens and all our visitors and everyone is following us via social media. Excuse me, want to open up in our normal fashion with our prayer and our pledge and Councilman Woods, would you mind leading us in our prayer on tonight?
Yes, yes, Stan. Our Father, our God, we just thank you and praise you again for just being such an awesome God. We thank you for just blessing us throughout this day with health, with strength. We thank you, oh God, that all things are well. And again, DeMastor, again, I just want to take time to say, Lord, I thank you for this opportunity to just be able to serve on this great council. Thank you again for the prayer, thank you for every council member, thank you for every department head.
Yes.
And again, DeMastor, tonight, we don't want to forget about those that are less fortunate. We don't want to forget about those that are sick. And God, we just thank you now for just blessing the city of Bolivar. And not only Bolivar, but this entire world. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. So I mean the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You call her Romans clerk.
Ms. Byram?
Here.
Mr. Golden?
Present.
Mr. Joy? Mr. Lau? Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Wally?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We got, let's see, three sets of minutes to approve. First, we're going to start with our council minutes from a previous meeting. If there are no changes or corrections to these minutes, is there a motion that we approve?
Minutes.
On the council minutes, on the council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion, so you got a question, Mr. Joy?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
You got it first or the second? Who did you stop him by?
All right, first and the second, no questions, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, on that meeting, then next one is a special call asphalt, uh, special call meeting for the purpose of taking the bids on the asphalt from May the twenty, twenty-third. Is there any changes or corrections, deletions to those minutes?
I got a question about that.
All right, go ahead.
And the question is, why do we take the, the, uh, not, why, why did we not take the late, the least bid? And in the past, in my two years here, is, we've been taking the last, you know, the cheapest bid. So what was the difference? And I, of course, of course, I've been working out of town, so I wasn't there, I wasn't here.
Can we defer that question down to the old business section of the asphalt bids that's going to be discussed then? The minute is just basically reflecting what happened at the meeting.
Okay, well, I just wanted to go fast, buggered in, you know, for sure.
Okay, yeah, we're going to discuss that at the, on the, on the old business.
So moved.
Motion is the second. Motion is the second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, next set of minutes is from our bu- budget meeting on June fourth. Is there any changes or corrections, deletions to those minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion to approve, there's a second? Motion is a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, under, under my report, I want to congratulate the new council members that was elected. Ms. Carolyn Spinks and Mr. Larry Crawford. And also, uh, Mr. McKenna will be returning and Mr. Lau will be returning as well. Uh, we'll, thank, looking forward to serving with them. We're going to have a special call meeting on July first at twelve, uh, noon. That's to change over and to swear in the new council members. And I would like for all the, that could, I know that's during the day, but that's the way our charter is set up. You have to do it at twelve noon on July first, so we'll have a special meeting to do that. And basically, we just take the swearing in, the, the new council members will take their swearing in and then they'll take their, uh, seat after that. So that'll be July the first at twelve. And, um, we encourage the citizens to come out to that as well.
They're a week ago.
That's a Monday, I think.
Yeah, Monday.
And we won't, we won't be here long at all, it'll probably take us fifteen minutes or so, if that long. All right, um, next, I want to invite you guys out to, uh, Family Fun Day sponsored by the Bolivar Housing Authority. It's going to be at Frog Town Park on Saturday from ten until twelve. Mr. Mike Miller gave some invite to that and want all the councils, council members that can come to come out and hang out with them for a little while. Let the Frog Town Park for their Family Fun Day. At ten.
This is Saturday?
Yes, sir. And then, uh, we'll be having our, we have Count Bolivar scheduled for next week, the eighteenth through the twenty-first. So you guys want to come by and hang out with some of the middle school kids here, we'll be all throughout town next week, uh, for Count, Count Bolivar. Uh, our set, we have a special call meeting on the twenty-seventh of this month. That will be to pass the budget, uh, on the second reading. So at six P M. the twenty-seventh. That will be to pass our budget on the second, already going to have a public hearing as well. Excuse, for, we have to have it passed by July first, so the twenty-seventh at six P M. Okay? And then on my, also for us recognizing someone this month, I had the opportunity to go to a breakfast with, um, Ms. Sheila Sondagresham, Representative for County Mayor's Office at the Carl Perkins, uh, office here in town. And I was sort of amazed, I was very amazed at what they're, what they're doing in our community, the great job that they're doing here in Hardeman County. And I was not aware of it. Uh, I honestly thought the center was not as active as they have been in the past, but they are very active. And I asked if they would come and give a just couple of minutes, just tell us about where they are located, what they're doing and introduce, come on, you guys come on and introduce themselves to, to the council.
Mayor, thank you so much for the invitation to come. Council, thank you so much for listening to us tonight. Um, I'm Pam Nash and I'm the President and C E O of the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center of West Tennessee. Um, I've been with the center thirty-three years. This is Monica Goodman, she is the County Director here in Hardeman County. Um, she's been with me for twenty-six years, so we've got a lot of experience right here with the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center. Um, we started providing services in Hardeman County back in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, Paige was very much a part of our starting our services here. Um, got very involved and has always been a great supporter and it was so good to see him today. But, um, we started just on a part-time basis. And then in two thousand seven, we actually established a center here. And we're on Tennessee Avenue. And, uh, we provide a lot of forensic interviews, a lot of counseling, therapy. We have a family, uh, relative caregiver program. But I want you all to know that we have provided services without any kind of break in services. The only time that, um, has affected the center here was when we had to get new forensic interview equipment. And what that is, is when we have children who have been severely physically or sexually abused, we bring them to the center and we actually do interviews with the children. And our equipment was pretty old, so we had to, you know, we were down for a few, few weeks because we had to get it rewired and get it purchased and get it put in. But our services never stopped. In fact, uh, for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, we served three hundred and eighty-five individuals here. And of those, a hundred and thirty-eight were children. And those children were either severely physically abused or sexually abused. So they got our twenty-four hour online, they got the therapy, they got the interview. We work very, very closely with the District Attorney's Office as well as the local law enforcement, um, and the Department of Children's Services to make sure that those that are hurting our children are prosecuted. And, um, I know that I talked to one, um, D A. not too long ago and asked how the child advocacy services had impacted their community. And they said there were four times more prosecutions because of it. So we feel like we're not only helping children, but we're helping the non-offending parent. And if the, if the kids have to go in foster care, we have a relative caregiver program that helps the grandparents or aunts and uncles, whoever the caretaker is, with furniture and emergency services as well as furniture. And, um, school uniforms and office supplies for their school, everything that they need. Because a lot of times, these are grandparents and they've already raised their kids and they're on a fixed income and all of a sudden, they may have custody. And I'm sure you know several people who have custody of relatives because of something that's happened. So we really want to support those individual families also. So I just wanted to come and let you all know that we are here. Um, there was a time that we cut back to a part-time county director because we had some funds cut in Hardeman County through our Victims Assessment Dollars. We are going before the county Tuesday night to ask that those be reinstated. And hopefully, what they did not pay is that, you know, maybe they'll consider going ahead and giving that to us. And if you all know anybody, I'm sure you do on the county commission, um, we will be there Tuesday night. And anything that you can say on our behalf, we would appreciate very, very much. Uh, Monica is here full-time and she would be more than happy to give you all a tour of the facility and let you see exactly where the kids come and what we do. Um, it's, it's an amazing, amazing job. Um, I look at it more as a mission and not just a job. But it takes all of us working together. And I thank the city of Bolivar and Hardeman County for the support they have given us throughout the year. Because we would not be here if it weren't for the support of you all. So I just want to say again, thank you very much. I asked Monica if she wanted to say anything, she didn't, she just wants to stand here and look pretty. But do y'all have any questions?
Do, uh, do you still do the forensic there?
Yes.
For those that may not know, uh, about the forensic, I've had the opportunity to sit in a couple of time on it. Especially children that's in a strange environment, they have an awesome way of making them feel comfortable. You can watch that video television, uh, the interview, uh, it just, it's an awesome place.
Thank you.
I say thank you guys so much for what you're doing in the community and looking forward, you've been here for a whole bunch more, a whole lot more years to come, so.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much and thank you all, council.
Starting with our standing committee reports, first, uh, electric. The B, the Bolivar Energy Authority approved the fiscal twenty-twenty budget of twenty-nine million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand. The board also approved the employment contract for Mr. Tony Kirk. It's all on the electric report, uh, utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mayor, council, uh, Bolivar Utility Board met last Wednesday on June the fifth. There were several items discussed, the highlights of it were, uh, the board approved for us to extend another gas main to Lone Oaks Facility, uh, out on the same road in Lake Hardeman. Uh, that's going to be a good line for us, we're going to be able to supply all those buildings out there with gas. Uh, they've been wanting that for a couple of years now, so that's in the, in the works. And also, the board approved the water sewer and the gas budget contingent on your approval to pass that, and gas prices remain at sixty-five cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Next, Fire Chief.
Chief Parker.
Good afternoon, everyone. Standing report, um, fire call had a total of twenty-four fire calls, had fifteen in the city, nine in the county. Uh, had training hour, four hundred and thirty-five training hours, small volume install, forty-eight, pre-planned inspection, twelve. And I left invitation to everybody in front of, in front of you guys and I hope you'll be able to make it, um, and that's my report.
Is that the same night, same time as our, our council meeting?
What night is that? Oh, yeah. They'll probably still be over there when we get there.
You're not going, y'all not going to be there long?
Yeah, we won't, we won't, we won't be there long, hopefully they have some food set back for us.
I just want to say congratulations on your leadership award.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe that's the same until we get over there.
Next, uh, Police Chief Jones.
Good evening. Uh, our police report is as follows. Calls of service was eight hundred and ninety-one, we did two hundred and eighty-eight citations, thirty-one accidents. Out of those thirty-one, twenty-three were property damage, eight were injury. We had forty-seven arrests, five were juvenile, forty-two were adult. Special events, we did sixty hours saturations, we had to have extra people to work to graduation. And we also had two hundred and ninety-two hours of training for the month.
Thank you. Next, Parks and Land, what's that? I don't think I stole one of your files today, I looked at your report before you came, so I didn't, I didn't say anything on yours.
Thank you. Mayor, council, my report, this follows. Our swimming pool opened on June fourth and will be open until August. We'll be starting our open gym from five to nine weekdays and we'll be offering a variety of games for youth nine years and up. Also, we are working on the Water Street Lot, building the entrance to the Kaboom Playground. We have received a diabetes grant, uh, from the Tennessee Department of Health for a hundred and fifty thousand. This money is zero match and will go toward certain projects at Sand Beach Lake Fitness and Education for diabetes prevention. Also, I have one other thing that I thought was going to be on the mayor's report, so he, he should have probably been in my business a bit. Uh, Kaboom Playground, we got a, I had a bid opening today at two o'clock. Uh, Kaboom is Cure Egg Dr. Pepper, for you guys who don't know. Uh, they require us to use three vendors, Recreation Concepts, Miracle Recreation and B C I Burke. We only received one bid from them. Uh, the bid meets the requirements. Here you go. Sheila? Sheila and Kathy sat in on the meeting when we opened the bids. I expected to have three bids, but we didn't get them, so this is a picture of the equipment. Like I said, it meets and exceeds specifications.
And it's twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and this is the grant that we got for, uh, this, I'm sorry, this will be paid for through a grant that we got through the Kaboom Park.
The grant covers all of it?
That's, well, we're going to have a match that we put in from, uh, lesser. And then I think, uh, Mr. Miller's supposed to be putting in some and then we're supposed to be getting some more community donations, so. It's twenty, twenty-four, was that total, I, it's like thirty-five of it or how much is all of it?
Or the estimate of building the park?
Yeah.
Probably close to thirty, yes. Maybe a little more.
This is for the.
Depends on how, how the prices come in on everything, but.
This is for the, the swing stuff, I don't know really what you would call that.
It's for the.
Okay, you, you got some, yeah, that stuff. Playground equipment.
Of course, they have a border and, you know, you love fencing, uh.
We put this in last year's budget, we just now getting to this point of, this point in the project.
So if you guys would like to accept that bid, it would be fine with me, if not, we'll proceed with whatever you guys recommend. How did you go about bidding it out? Uh, we advertised on the internet and we sent specs to each one of these companies. Like I said, Cure Egg Dr. Pepper, we, they requested us to go through these three vendors and that's what we did. We sent them to specs and only one responded. Actually, we thought we had two.
That's what I know.
B C I Burke, they sent a U P S package and it was just their book. So we opened it and it was their catalog, so. Let me ask you this, did you say the state told you to, uh, call those three peoples a? Cure Egg, Dr. Pepper.
That's the, the grant.
Grants, that's okay, it wasn't the state, but somebody does the grant, okay, I got you. They, they're, they call those preferred vendors. I'll make a motion, we approve the, the bid.
I have a motion in a second, any other questions? Call the, uh, Romans clerk.
Ms. Byram?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mr. Joy? Mr. McKinney?
Aye.
Ms. Ray? Mr. Wally?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
That concludes my report.
Next, Streets and Sanitation, Mr. Ed Ivanoff.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
We've picked up brush and patching potholes and cutting grass throughout the town and we hired, uh, Tom Wyatt as our new mechanic. Russell, that's where we picked up ninety-six ton, the commercial, we picked up three hundred and twenty-one tons of garbage. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ivanoff. Plan them.
Uh, Planning Committee met last month and fat on our, and then we approved a plan for the fast-paced, urgent care center and this will be located on the West Market next to Auto Zone and between Truck Supply Interest. Next meeting will be the seventeenth next month, we'll go farther with you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gold. Next, Live Red, Ms. Becky White.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the month of May, we took in seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents from donations, copies, fines and taxes. We had a total of nineteen programs with one hundred and seventeen participants. The highlight for that month was some reading kickoff, we had the magic show with, um, Mr. Nick Coons and it was great. Uh, we had two thousand sixty-three total circulation with six hundred and ninety-two computer users, one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven Wi-Fi users and four hundred and thirty-nine from readings. We're continuing our Healthy Twenty-Nineteen program this summer with Tai Chi Tuesdays.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Becky.
You should have the senior citizen report, Ms. Peggy was not able to be here tonight, but all her activities are routine. Next, Historic Zoning Commission, Ms. Vire.
Historic Zoning Commission met May ninth to discuss and review the following items. The Louise Theater Restoration and C L G Coordinator liaison, Kathy Mayfield awarded the Certificate of Merit for two thousand nineteen from the Tennessee Historical Commission. The courthouse phase two facade restoration is underway. The Tennessee Code annotated Title Thirteen, Part Four Historic Zoning, Purpose Commission, District Guidelines and Certificate of Appropriateness. The Certified Local Government Program, established through National Historic Preservation Act following to local, state, federal partnership with local management and local services. Technical assistance, training and grants are provided from the Tennessee Historical Commission. The differences between the national register and the local registered districts. The advantages of local historic designations, research and inventory properties in East Bolivar and renovations to historic buildings are less expensive than new construction. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ivanoff, next, uh, Quirms and Zoning, Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, had eight building consultations, wrote two permits, five building inspections, three plumbing inspections, three mechanical inspections. Uh, thirty courtesy notices issued, attended the planning commission on the twentieth. Also, on the fourteenth, we removed the burned-out structure on Sycamore Street that we've been working on about five, six years, every how many. And I want to say a special thanks to the utility department and the street department for all their helping and getting that done. They provided trucks and equipment and drivers to get it hauled off, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, and also after, I mean, after this meeting, we'll be having automobile slum hearing, uh, Ms., Ms., not Ms. Wally, Ms. Ray. Ms. Ray and Mr. McKenna, so you guys would, if the council would like to stay, you feel free to, but we'll have that committee to meet, uh, back here in the back for automobile here. The DEFCO, uh, did not meet today, will be scheduled on a meeting for next month. Uh, you get a text message from Sheila about next scheduled DEFCO meeting. This concludes all the standing committee reports. Now, we'll start with old business, uh, Mr. Wayne Wooden is here to discuss asphalt bids, you can come forward, Mr. Wooden. Spoke with Mr. Wooden, uh, after our call meeting in June about the bid process and, uh, Mr. Wooden is here with A N W Asphalt and I told him that I would allow him to speak to the council tonight about that, so, Mr. Wooden, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, I had, uh, some concerns. Normally, I know people take the lowest bid and, uh, that concern was that you didn't do the lowest bid and I wish that somebody could just voice why.
Well, the council, the council had the special meeting, we went with the, the, we did the bid openings and we took the reference from our department head on the jobs that you guys have done in the city on previous things, so.
Okay.
The council decided to.
What, what jobs, I, I'm, I'm trying to see the particulars as to what jobs that, 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 that has been done that somebody said wasn't, didn't meet the city.
That them do what now?
Didn't meet the city's specifications, what job?
I just, just your work throughout the community, so.
Where?
J and J.
I'm trying to see, okay, come on.
Well, well, that, now, that's, that's what my question was because I seen the minutes and the minutes says several jobs. And I know, uh, from Mr. Wayne Wooden and I didn't look at even just past, like, maybe three months. He did a, a parking lot that's, uh, probably have five hundred parking in it. And I think he did a good job, he did my church and it's actually three hundred parking in it. So what job or what have y'all seen that Mr. A N W have done that was so bad? Now, I've heard that this board said, or somebody within this board said, he did J and J. Now, everybody that got some good sense know he, when he did J and J parking lot, it was, it was because it was, it was raining and it was cold and the, uh, he couldn't move in until he had a parking lot, am I right, Mr. Ricky? Okay, so therefore, if, if the owner want you to do it, you do it. You getting paid for it, whether it works or not, you do it. So and I have heard that Mr. Eddie said, he brought up J and J. You said in open form, so therefore, he got Mr. J and J here tonight. That was defamation of character of his job. He got J and J, you think you're here to say you did a, he did a good job or a bad job? What you think you're here for?
I think the best thing to do, let him, since he's standing up there, let him talk for himself, I think.
Well, I just hate when you discredit somebody's business because I'm self-employed myself and if you're not here to say what's what, because you don't, you don't read our contracts. You don't know what's really going on until you actually, you know, actually look at the problem or the situation. And therefore, and this, there was a situation, this guy right here was trying to actually get in the building. And he knew that Mr. Watkins was not going to let him in that building unless he had a parking lot, am I right, Mr. Watkins? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I understand when we did the parking lot, it was like what he said, it was raining, it was cold, it was like almost on winter's time. And, uh, most their fault, I think I was playing, if this is a lot, I was playing the contractor more than Wayne. He's the one who was responsible for, to fix the parking, the parking lot for Mr. Wayne to, you know, to do the paving, espell. So most was like our fault and, um, the contractor because it was raining and cold and we had to do it, we had no choice. We had to do it. And in summer's time, he came back and he would do some, like the parking lot here, he'd do some of it. And he continued to like, you know, line it up and do it all over again.
All right, well, we, what we at, we can, um, the bid has been awarded to Fowler, I think it was Fowler. So if the council want to undo the actions, they'll redo all that, we on a deadline to do it.
I think the motion, I think y'all had on paper said it was several jobs, so is this the only one or y'all had some more?
What's your name?
They say it had several jobs that he messed up.
That's.
Is this the only one?
Y'all got any more, y'all, what, that's.
Okay, well, I make, I make a motion, we undo it, if he the cheapest one, you got the owner right here.
Yeah, well, I'm, I can speak for me, okay? Uh, now, I went off of what I heard of the job. I appreciate you coming in tonight, explaining. We have a responsibility, uh, to the citizen of Bolivar, okay? And honestly, I did, I went by, I seen the parking lot myself, I seen what the dumpsters was sitting at, okay? And not knowing that you was in the area to get in. The blame, honestly, my, I'm, I'm just talking about me. I looked at the contractor, okay? Basically, myself tonight, I withdraw what I said, okay? Because this, this is what I, this is what I was looking at. Okay?
Uh, so what we.
Because I was looking at his work, that was his work. And not knowing the entire picture, we wasn't, nobody, this is the first time we've heard this. You being the owner, okay? So honestly, I was looking at him and I blamed him.
So what we, what we at, and I, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr., um, wrong in how we can handle this. We have awarded the bid, they've brought the equipment and started, if we decide to do the, because y'all have to take the action, I ain't, I don't make motions of vote on any of it. If we undo what we did, we have to pay, I'm assuming, pay them what they choose to do, do we have, what's the price? If we undo what we did, we have to pay, I'm assuming, pay them what they choose to do. Do we have, what's the process from moving on from that? The, I guess, procedure and moving forward?
Well, you've awarded the bid to another company, Fowler, and, uh, my understanding is that they've...
They've accepted, that their offer's been accepted and that they are, I don't, I mean, I'm sure they have completed the project.
No, they just, I think they starting tomorrow.
Their activity. But, uh, if, if you accepted their bid, you are potentially liable for the full amount, whether they've only performed one percent of it or not, because you did award them the bid and they ha, it has been accepted. So, you, you are looking at potential liability to Fowler if you withdraw a bid after it's been accepted.
Okay. So, if he, to risk, what would we be, just making a motion to op, open the bid back or rescind it, or how would we?
Well...
Cause I, I, that's what you want to do, right, Mr. George?
Well, I can't rescind it because I didn't vote for it.
Well, I'm talking about...
So, it's got to be somebody that's actually voted for it to rescind it, but I can also, I can vote a different way to do it. Am I right, Mr. Attorney?
Well... Or do you know? What you can do, I guess, depends on what motion is made, but it, right now, there's a, an offer was, uh, you know, they, a bid of Fowler's has been accepted. You've got an agreement right now that's binding with them.
Have that contract been signed?
Well, it wasn't a contract, it was the bid. The bid, we accept the bid and a contract was signed.
Still got to be some kind of contract that's signed, actually. They're saying you accepted...
The action of the council.
Eighty, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cent per ton.
That was, that was it. It, we don't sign a, like, we just did that bid. I won't have a contract that we, I sign every time. The action of the council is that, that's the binding agreement.
Okay.
It's a hundred, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, and we just do up until, to that point.
So, we would be liable for a hundred and fifty thousand, is what you're saying?
I guess Fowler, that they came if they choose to.
Even if they haven't ran one piece of asphalt?
Well, if you, if you sign an, if, if you got an agreement with them, if, if the offer has been accepted, the bid has been accepted, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here in a public forum and, and stand here and concede liability on behalf of the city, but I am making you aware that you have, you potentially are liable for the full amount.
So, they may or may not. You don't really know them.
Well, it's not, I mean, if you want to go into a private session to talk about it, I, I'm not gonna sit here in front of a camera and tell you you're on the hook if I, for a case I might be defending one day. That's just, I don't do business that way. But, but I'm...
I mean, well, if we haven't signed anything, we're not liable to say that we done anything, right?
But there's, well, I'm saying there's no contract that we signed. That, the action that...
That was just a phone call or email, right?
The action that we took at the council meeting, and once we told them we awarded the bid, that, that is the agreement. There's not like a separate contract that you go through and sign.
Well, if you're talking about litigation, you have to have some kind of signed agreement saying there's legal binding and so forth that you are liable to pay, uh, eighty-nine and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents per ton. That's we gonna stand in, in court, not saying that, oh, we agreed upon it and shook your hand, hand.
Well, we did more than that. The council voted, that, that will stand in court. The count, the agreement was what we voted on and we took the whatever amount the ton, tonnage was. That was what was accepted. So...
Well, I see the city saint, uh, saving a whole lot more money than, uh, eighty-nine, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents per ton.
On the separate, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought you said...
And I think we should have looked into it a little bit more than, uh, throwing somebody, I would say, under the bus. And that's what this board done or who allowed to whoever's done it. I heard it. I wasn't here. I was on my way, but like I said, I was working in Memphis. But, uh, to bring up somebody's business or what they have done in the past, you have to look at the contract, you know? And look at the contract and see what was actually written and why it was done that way. But to ham screen someone on one job, I, I, I mean...
What motion do he need to make to move forward on that now?
I think Mr. McKenna's got something he wants to say.
I think he said, one of us have to make, we, we have to change that to one that was here. Is that correct?
That, to rescind that motion, yeah.
Rescind that motion. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
No, sir, not necessarily.
Anybody can do it. But you have to have a second to move forward also too, right?
Right.
Because if you don't get a second, it fail for the lack of a second. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so anybody can make a motion to rescind then, is what you're saying?
That ain't what's in the Robert Rule of Order. This the book we still go through.
Yeah, I don't, you, the mo, the person that made the motion have to rescind it.
You rescind, that's what I thought.
That's what I read.
I mean, basically, that's what I'm getting at. If we don't, if nobody here that was present is not gonna make that motion or gonna make the motion, they need to go ahead and do that so we can either second it, cause we gonna be here all night if we keep talking like this.
Well, if you can save the city's money.
Go ahead, Mr. Watkins.
I just wanna have a, I just wanna understand from what I'm hearing where, where we are. When we met in that special session to consider the bids and we got the information rightly or wrongly that there were J and J plus others, if we erred in that, we erred in that, but a decision was made to award a hundred and fifty thousand dollar maximum for eighty-eight, not eighty-nine, eighty-eight a ton. And it seems to me, if I understand right, where we are is that we either proceed with regrets, apologies, whatever, that how it was done could have and should have been done differently, or we look to try to unravel this, but we already are obligated for a hundred and fifty thousand and have nothing left to pay anyway at the eighty-eight, at the eighty-five dollar a ton. That's, that's what I'm understanding. So, it's, it's how do you, how do you deal with something that has happened that in hindsight could have, maybe should have been handled differently, but now this is where we are and we're obligated and the citizens are obligated, it sounds like, for the hundred and fifty thousand to the person to whom it was awarded?
Mr. Mayor, the statement I was gonna make a moment ago, uh, was, on the question of whether or not the council had the right legal right, not put aside the policy of what's the right decision made, but on whether or not you had the legal right to reject the bid, you did have the legal right to reject the bid under your charter, uh, which calls for lowest and best bid, not just lowest bid. And among the factors that courts have considered appropriate in, uh, determining whether a bid is lowest and best is the issue of past performance. And as I understand it, I was at the meeting, past performance was one of the criteria you took into account. So, on the issue of whether or not you were within, whether the council acted legally within it, within its rights to reject the bid, you did. Whether you should have or not is a matter of policy, not legal, that's the other.
So, we can, Mr. George, just can make a motion to take the, undo that and make, make a motion to go with that low bid if you want to and second and do that.
Well, I can't rescind.
I didn't say rescind. I'm saying you can just make a motion to go with A and W asphalt based on what you brought up and...
From, from previous.
No.
You, yes, he, he can make, he can make that motion. Now, y'all don't have to second and vote for, but he can't...
What'd they say?
They, they was just saying that you can't do that because you was, he's not rescinding it.
I didn't rescind.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So...
I told you all I couldn't rescind.
Yeah, so go ahead and make your motion and we'll move forward on it.
Could this a parliamentary inquiry, if I might?
Go ahead.
My sense was that after something like this passes, whether I agree with it or not, that there's a process by which you have to have a motion to reconsider your action in adopting something or pass it before you ever get to actually do it.
Yeah.
And, and I guess you're back as the parliament carrying the space.
Yes, sir. A, a motion to rescind a previous action can be undertaken. It doesn't necessarily have to be by
That's right.
the prevailing, or, or the prevailing party. However, Robert's Rules of Order does require that a motion to rescind, uh, be considered with notice. So, in other words, if, if you had on the agenda consideration of a motion to rescind, you know, that would be proper, you have to have note, you have to provide notice of a motion to rescind under Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
And then, and then once it's on the agenda and then you, you have the motion and then if there's a second, you have whatever discussion, have your vote.
Uh-huh.
But you really don't have a motion to, I'm just looking at the written agenda. I just think a motion to rescind, uh, was put on the agenda unless there's some notice that went out concerning that potential notice you're rescinding. I'm not aware of. I don't think there's been notice.
Is there a possibility of getting sued from the first person that we passed the rule, you know? We passed that and then if we deny it, we possibly could get sued for that money. Plus, we still have to pay for the second one, and then we'll be paying double? You know, really, I guess you would say, because we have to pay these people because we agreed. And then we also have to pay the lowest bid because we agreed again on that, you know, so...
Well, either way it go, Mel, you can get sued. You sit, yeah, this board sit here and allow defamation of character of his business to go along and his board and his business owner right here today? Yeah, either way it go, you gonna get sued.
All right, well, what we'll do, is there, is there any other questions for Mr. Wooden?
To answer, uh, you'll, to answer your question, uh, you don't have liability for rejecting the offer. Now, can you be sued? People, as you know, people sue, can sue for anything.
Yeah.
But you do not have liability for refusing the offer.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But it's asked to me, could you have liability for rescinding the accepted offer? You certainly could, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I hate, go ahead. Well, you probably finna say what I gonna say. Go ahead.
Mr. Maroni, could you, uh, I, this is Robert's Rules of Order here, number thirty-seven on that page there. Read that down there. But you can rescind something without notice.
You have to have two thirds.
But it's gonna take two thirds of the vote to, uh...
Yeah, he can, you can...
I would have seen.
So, that's what I was trying to get him to make the motion.
You probably have, but he...
Yeah.
He said you couldn't, but you, I think you can rescind it.
And he done have to...
It takes two thirds of the vote.
I done asked him twice. Did he know?
That's all, that's all.
I didn't either until I read it.
Yeah, so go ahead and make that motion if you want to do that.
You can, you can rescind it. It requires a majority vote with notice. But if you, if you don't have, if you have a two, two thirds, a two thirds vote can overrule...
Um, it's more, right, yeah.
You don't, you all, a two thirds vote of the body can overrule rules. You're, you're elected to operate under the Robert's Rules of Order. But it's two thirds vote, you can...
But this, this, this is what we'll do to move on, because we got a lot more on the agenda. If somebody will make a motion to suspend the rules, we can suspend the rules. We don't have to argue over the rules. And then we can make a motion, undo it and go from there. If there's a motion to suspend the rules for this particular situation here, that, is that motion on the floor? Okay, no motion.
Make a motion, we suspend, suspend the rules.
All right, there are motions, there are second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, roll call that, Ms. Uh...
Two thirds, you said, right?
Uh...
Ms. Vire? No.
No.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
No.
Ms. Ray? No. Mr. Wallace? No.
All right, so that, that motion failed. So, uh, I just apologize, Mr. Wooden, the actions of the council and, uh, is there anything that you would be...
Let me, let me just say something. What, 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 when I'm here and what I, and I, that's, I don't like bickering and stuff. But see, what bothers me the most is that one man says something against my company. I've been in business ever since nineteen ninety. I've had some good days and I've had some bad days. But I, but what disturbed me most is when one man makes the statement against my company and other people who don't know me go, go, go with that, who don't nothing, don't know nothing about my company, ain't seen nothing I've done. If you wanted to see stuff I've done, you need to come and see it. You can't go over what, what Eddie said. And, and, and I'm gonna just tell you how I feel about it. See, Eddie and my son got into it up at J and J. I kinda come to storm over something I had nothing to do with. We was told to do something.
You're making a mistake.
Oh, no, well, well, Mr. Maroni.
I, I can finish, I think. But when one person says he don't feel like, and you got other council members who don't know anything about A and W asphalt, run with that. That's what bothered me the most. That's defamation of character. I'm done. I don't wanna, and, and trust, trust me when I tell you, and I mean no harm when I say it, I don't even want it. We, we backed up a month now. I don't want it, but I'm here to clear my name.
Yeah.
And, and I, I'm gonna get my name cleared because I don't believe it's, it's right. I feel like I've been discriminated against, and I feel like I did defamation of character. I thank y'all for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Wooden. Next on the agenda, Mr. Jeremy McKenna, the West Tennessee Eagles.
Uh, I, I wanted to bring a plaque, uh, to present, uh, it has, uh, all the council's names on it. It also has, uh, Director Stack, his name, of course, and I just want to present this plaque, uh, to the council. I don't know when it's a good time to take a picture, but I do want to, to bring this to, uh, present to you all.
Okay, Mr. Slares, here, sit, take a picture with us and...
And, uh, and also, uh, individually, to, uh, uh, Mary by Tizzy, I'd like to get you to come down for this specifically. Uh, and this is just, like I said, yours specifically before I brought it to the board. Uh, I wanted to talk about some things that I wanted to do, and you allowed me the chance to, you know, bring it to the board. So, you...
Thanks so much. Thank you, man. Appreciate you guys. Uh, I did go to one of the games, but they had a real life family. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
And like I said, I thank you all for allowing it to happen. It was a successful year, ironically, because, uh, usually when we start out in new places, it, it doesn't go, you know, real good, but we tapped a third, first year here. So, I'm just asking for more support, uh, from you all, from the business community, uh, community in general as a whole. So, thank you.
I'll say thank you so much. I did have the opportunity to come to one of the games and my kids enjoyed it and real nice crowd here, real good, uh, family fun entertainment for the city. So, uh, wish you guys best of luck next year and on, on a good season as well. That's all our old business we had. Next, on the new business, we got our charter changes back, uh, processing this. We, we have to have a two thirds majority to pass the charter changes. We did that, uh, two, three months ago, I guess, and sent that to Nashville. Representative Shaw and Senator Gresham presented this to the, to the House and the Senate and it's passed, and they have signed it, and they sent it back for, uh, send it back to us for council approval. We have to have two thirds majority, uh, of the council, not of people present. So, we have to have six to, uh, pass this charter. But it's exactly like we sent it to Nashville. They didn't change anything. They sent it back to us the way we, where we, uh, where we sent it to them, and I'll just go over each little section here. The first section, it talks about where we define the council section, took the council, took the mayor out of the council as counted in a quorum. So, in order for us to have a council meeting, it requires, uh, five council members. And I, as mayor, I won't count in that quorum. Uh, remove the limitations and set the, the salaries of the council and the mayor will be set by ordinance opposed to sending it to Nashville, and they, they have to approve all that. Um, also changed the taxes, the, the tax deadline and the tax bills. Basically, we just updated our charter to match what we was doing, which was following the state law. Uh, a lot of these things in the charter just were old and hadn't been, hadn't been updated. And also, we also changed the purch, we'll be changing the purchasing policy to match the state purchasing policy opposed to the one we had, which was very, very old and out of date. Uh, so, we will be following the purchasing policy of the state. And we got an ordinance to pass, pass that purchasing policy on down in the new business. Any questions on the, on the, uh, charter?
If a motion will approve, the charter is adopted by the legislature.
Okay, we have a, have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, have to be a roll call vote. Uh, call the roll, Ms. Clark.
No.
Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Ray? Aye. Mr. Wallace? Aye.
All right, motion here. All right, uh, next we have the first reading of ordinance nineteen zero zero one and ordinance amending the official zone and map of Bolivar Tennessee to rezone the hearing described property from R one to B one. Uh, this is the public hearing section on, on this, on that ordinance. So, is there a motion that we, uh, exit from executive session and convene into public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we are now in the public hearing section of ordinance nineteen zero zero one. Is there any citizens here that would like to address the council on this ordinance? All right, I'll say, is there a motion to?
Make a motion, we go back into executive session.
Second.
Our motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, is there any questions on this property here that passed on the plan commission, we get a positive recommendation from them, so is there a motion to approve this rezon?
So moved.
Have a motion on a second.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is the reading, uh, first reading of ordinance nineteen zero zero two and ordinance for budget amendments. Most of all these budget amendments have been approved, or I brought to you guys to approve before we made them, but a lot of this, majority of this stuff in here is grants, uh, taxes, we don't know for sure what that amount will be, so once we get those in, as it gets closer to the year, we are able to do all the amendments, and so, Miss Lisa put a, a description of the amendments on all of them, so are there any questions on any of the amendments? And I, I hate having to do all these like this, but we don't really know until we get them, so. Are there a motion to approve the budget amendments on the first read?
So moved.
Motion is a second.
Second.
Motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have the first reading of ordinance nineteen zero zero three and ordinance for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Um, let me get through here. Uh, what I'll do, I'll just sort of try to hit some high points on this, and you guys, if y'all, once I get through, if anybody have any questions, we try to answer, we I commend, uh, first the employees and department heads and, uh, started, we started working on budget stuff about a month or two ago, and they all presented different things that they needed and they all understand, uh, that we try to live within our means as a city, and commend them on that. Also, Miss Sheila and Miss, uh, Lisa Dillinger do a great job with stuff when it comes to putting on our, putting our budget together. I'll make some notes on there. Uh, first thing in here that we like to talk about, we, this is the current, the same tax rate, this was the no, no increase in any taxes, no new taxes, anything like that, uh, with a, right now, on with our first hearing, we are looking at to contribute to our fund balance, to the, what, page, forty-eight thousand, one thirty-seven. There are a couple of items that I would since the last budget meeting that we had that we talked about with the budget committee. The budget committee, uh, consists of Mr. McKenney, uh, being the chairman, Mr. Wally, the vice mayor, and Mr. Todd Lau, and we met together with Miss, Miss, uh, Dillinger and went through all of these, and one thing that we did not put that we would like to add in capital outlay section is the repairs of the floor at the fire department, um, so that will change the, uh, that expenditure line on that. We got quote, we have to do this bid this out, but we got quotes to do the whole floor, would be twenty thousand to sand, patch, and replace would be ten, but I will give Mr. uh, Mr. Price, uh, chief price and get some other prices and see how we'll do that. Capital outlay is, uh, also in here is a three percent cost of living increase for all the employees, which I, I'm so happy that the budget committee went along with that and agreed with us, uh, given that to our employees, we know things, cost of things go up, that we would like to be able to do more, but we, uh, don't wanna put too much of a burden on citizens. Um, and one section under the mayor and council, if you see, it has a, a tally board, we put in here ten thousand, don't think it's gonna cost that much, don't know for sure what it's gonna cost, we're trying to find it, what we was looking at doing was putting a tally system here where we vote that it will be tallied on the, on the screen, uh, but we've been having trouble trying to find that, that system, so that may potentially be coming out as well, just all depends on what we can find. Um, the, one more thing, okay, and the housing authority pilot funds, if you guys can remember, we took that every year and let, well, not every, the last couple of years, we gave that tax money back out of our revenue section to them to start, uh, development, and what I, we, this year we didn't do that, we left it in our budget they have, a little bit that they've got started with, so we put that back in here this year to add to our revenues, but they, they come up to around ten thousand dollars, give or take a little. So, total revenues for this budget is five, five million, four hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, total expenditures, five million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, leaving a contribution to the fund balance of forty-eight thousand, one thirty-seven, which would put our fund balance from three point six million, three point seven million. And I'll open it up for questions and anything like that, and I'll try to do my best to answer them. Go ahead, Mr. Wally.
Could you review a little bit about the, you mentioned about the very important element of the three percent across the board pay raise for our employees, could you also mention some about the, the benefits, the longevity, and, and what we did?
Oh, yeah, we do, we do include the, we did include longevity in this, and that's, it's twenty-five a year, so, it's a twenty-five a year for every year that you've been here. Uh, we've included that in this, in this budget as well, uh, benefits and insurance and all of that, we included that as well. We're looking at a, at a renewal rate of a three percent increase, which was a lot better than the original twelve percent that we was originally quoted, so, uh.
We cover that for?
Yes, and we cover, the city pays a hundred percent for single, uh, and it's about sixty, seventy percent for family. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Did we bid out the insurance?
No, sir. We, uh, what I did, I presented, what I presented was a, to Cigna, a renewal, they, they came back, like I said, at twelve percent, and I told them if we didn't get anything cheaper or lower than that, that we would look at bidding it, and they came back with the three percent, which is a lot lower than what it, uh, renewal usually, usually be. So, I, I didn't wanna take the chance and bidding every year, and I, something I probably, I'd say a mistake that I made last year when we bid out the insurance, I probably should have informed and said that we would do it for two-year process or three-year process. My concern with bidding insurance, I, all four of us bidding it, but my concern be the employees changing insurance, uh, every, potentially every year, back and forth with new cards, and what you don't wanna do is go to the doctor and something is not covered and you get a hospital bill or something like that, but short answer to your question, though.
If you're getting the same coverage at a cheaper price, I mean, it's more of a market out here outside of Hardeman County, uh, I think we still shopping in Hardeman County right now, am I right?
No, sir. Well, you, we didn't shop anybody this year.
That's what I'm saying, but our insurance is actually based out of Hardeman County.
It's with Cigna, Bobby is saying is our agent.
Yeah, that's the agent, so it's based out of Hardeman County. Therefore, if we shop, you know, we might can get cheaper insurance, uh, 'cause it went up three percent from my paperwork. So, what is the total three percent, what would that cost the city, or what would that cost the employee?
The employee won't see an increase if they don't.
Okay, well, how much would the city?
Oh, ah, that's a number I don't have.
You didn't look at that, just three percent?
Yeah, I did, I don't have that number, I mean, I can give it to you tomorrow.
One of the things we might wanna do in that regard is next year, prepare to bid it out with, with a multi-year contract instead of this one or two, because nothing is more miserable, and I've been through this twice the last year personally, with having to change health insurers, new providers, you know, changes in coverage, and you never find, at least my experience has been apples and apples when you're doing this, there's, you know, someone has a different deductible, copay, uh, the physician or the providers had different experiences with particular insurance, they don't wanna deal with it. So, you know, that would be my thought, too, to, you know, to get at what Mr. Joyce is talking about, I think we could look at bidding it next year, but make it for at least two, if not more.
Well, I just don't want one company to think we're just gonna give it to them because they know we're not bidding it out.
That'd be a good thing to start on next year to, to try that, because some insurance, you know, that like hours that work, it was ninety, and when it, knowing it's eighty percent that it pays, and then you got two different insurance companies, some of them don't take up, uh, existing sickness you already got, next one won't do it, and some doctors don't take it, and where you might have a doctor you're going to now, and you get another plan, that doctor don't take that one, so we need to investigate on it a little deeper next round, maybe.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the fall for that, like I said, we bid, I was, as a council person, I really was for us bidding out the insurance, and I, I still am, but I just like this, like I said, to keep, make sure we keep the people that we're covering in mind when we do that process, but, and I will get you that amount on that three percent, uh, of what that actually, what that total is. You don't happen to have that down there, do you, Miss, but I'll get it for you. Any other questions? All right, we, um, have this here, we'll bring this back for public hearing, and like I said, this one thing that we will add, that you will see that number will change when we add, if nobody's opposed to adding that capital outlay in there for Chief.
Chief.
That's what I was wanting to ask for a motion to pass on the first read.
That, would that be for the, what, ten thousand, or what, you said twenty thousand?
I was gonna, I was gonna put ten, unless anybody's opposed to doing ten. I mean, let me go back to that thing.
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought I heard you said twenty something.
Yeah, well, it's two different, we, to complete turd down, complete turd down the concrete and floor and refinish it all, it's twenty, and these, we have bid it out, but this is just the estimate that he received, was twenty thousand, five hundred, to sand, patch, and paint existing cracks, and I don't know if you guys have seen, it's just, he had cracks in his floor in there, um, to sand, patch, and paint, it's ten thousand, five hundred. Did I say that right? Chief, go ahead.
I know that's the bed room you're talking about, also the floor back in the training room, we think he had a sucker being on there, I think that price is in there.
Okay, do you know that number?
I didn't tell you.
Eleven, eleven hundred, eleven hundred, so.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-one, six hundred.
Four eleven thousand.
Four eleven thousand, uh, six hundred, right. It's, yeah, all right, okay, all right. So, we will be adding it, well, add and taking away however you wanna do it from that forty-eight one thirty-seven.
Why don't we make a motion then that we on first reading passes budgets, amended with eleven thousand, what is it?
Eleven six.
Eleven six to patch the fire bay and main floor.
Okay.
Put our balance in about, what, thirty thousand to thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, well, thirty-seven.
Second.
I have a motion on a second, uh, to pass the budget on first budget ordinance number ni, excuse me, ord, ordinance number nineteen zero zero three on first reading. I have a motion on a second, will you call or roll, Ms. Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Dowd.
Aye.
Mr. Joyce?
Aye.
Mr. McKenney?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, a motion, a motion carry, and we're gonna add, uh, eleven thousand, six hundred to the expenditures, and you guys will have that in your next, uh, in your next budget. We'll, once we update that, I have her email it to you, and we will be passing this on the second reading, and citizens, if you guys would like to address the council on this budget, have any questions, you can do that on the twenty-seventh for our special call meeting at six P M. All right, um, next we have the reading, first reading of ordinance nineteen zero zero four and ordinance to amend Title V, the purchasing policy of the Bolivar municipal code. Basically, if you guys have that, this is just to follow the state policy, in a nutshell, it's gonna move the purchases from public C O Bs from twenty-five hundred to ten thousand. Uh, everything in there is still pretty much the same, three, we're in quotations, I require whenever possible for purchases costing more than twenty-five hundred but less than ten thousand. I had a department head meeting this morning, and I encouraged them that we, even though the requirement won't be there for the twenty-five hundred, if we ha, if we're, if we can still bid out the, uh, purchases unless something come up that's a emergency be, before then, but this is just basically the state, this is identical to the state's municipal purchasing policy. Any questions on that? There a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Last thing we have on here is the Bolivar Energy Authority Board Appointment of Mr. Elmer Cobb. Uh, Mr. Elmer Cobb will serve for a five-year board appointment with Bolivar Energy Authority. I've talked to Mr. Elmer, and he's excited to serve, uh, a motion to approve Mr. Elmer Cobb to the B A Board.
Make a motion that we approve Mr. Elmer Cobb to be on the board.
Motion is there? I have a motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, anybody on the community to develop? All right, there a motion to adjourn?
Just a minute, Mr. Wood.
Oh, oh, okay.
Uh, just wanna take this time.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I got one more special call, you, you, I just wanna take this time, I'm getting it, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to serve for everybody, department head, I appreciate you, you're one of you, I hope I served everybody well, but I just wanna say adios.
We bring you back to be our designated prayerer, though.
Yeah, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed of motion?